Online meeting to order Monday, February 5, 2024. We'll ask Danny Ferris if he would lead us in the pledge.
Pledge and limitations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Danny. We'll ask Brother Chester Scharter if he would now come up and lead us in prayer. If you would, come up to the microphone there, Chester Scharter.
Before I pray, I brought the mayor a note. You know an acronym of a word. You take the letters. Well, Miller is Mayor in Litchfield loves every run. Let's bow together. Lord, we come before you today. We just thank you, Lord, for the time to spend with folks that govern our city, and we just thank you so much for the leadership that we have for the mayor and the council people, and we just thank you, Lord, for your guidance that I know you give. We ask you, Lord, to give wisdom tonight in the decisions I know they need to make and to keep us where we need to be, and thank you for a city that is so minded as we are to pledge and to just think about you. Guide us now, Lord, through the meeting tonight. In your precious and holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brother Chester. All right, moving on to the next item, approval of the regular meeting minutes from January 16th, 2024. If there are no questions or concerns with those, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I make a motion. We accept the minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tootie. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is approval and ratification of bills. We all got a copy of those Friday to look through. If there aren't any questions or concerns about those, we will entertain a motion to accept the bills.
I make a motion. Accept the bills, Mayor.
Motion Billy.
I make a second that we accept.
Second by Gina. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is, we're going to need a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion. We go into executive session.
Tootie, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Quick. It's going to be for KRS 61-810-1B possible land purchase, KRS 61-810-1C pending litigation, and KRS 61-810-1F discussion of appointment.[173.95]
All right, we'll make the need a motion to come back into regular session.
I make a motion, we come back in regular session.
Second by two, y'all in favor?
Aye.
Earlene, you want to report on?
Yes. All right, we had executive session for a few different reasons. Number one, we had discussion of an appointment tonight and an interview session pursuant to our ordinance for an upcoming appointment of a board member. And I believe we're going to take a vote on that tonight if we wanted to go ahead and do that. Also, there was a update on pending litigation. There was a case against the city that the city was successful on last week. It was dismissed. Counsel got an update on that. And then a possible land purchase was discussed and moving forward on that. So if we wanted to go ahead and take a vote on the appointment.
We can do that. It's on, it's on the back, but we can move it up.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
Well, we might as well move it up while we're talking about it.
Yeah. The appointment that we're discussing is an available appointment to the Utilities Commission. And I have recommended that we appoint Kevin Ferris as Commissioner on that commission. He's served on there before and also worked for the Utilities, so he's got a ton of experience. And I think experience is good, so I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we put Kevin on the Utilities Commission, Kevin Ferris.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Gina, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Do we need to mention how that come about, Mayor, just for the people that are listening out, out and about that we did have Greg Bernard's term ending on 2/28?
Yeah, Mr. Bernard's term actually ends on that commission on February 28th. And that was, that was something I discussed with him and had some discussions with Kevin also. Wasn't anything to do with, with anything personal. It was just kind of a business decision. I think, like I said, I think the, the experience goes a long way. I think the experience that Kevin has will, will be very beneficial to the Utilities Commission. Mr. Bernard has been a beneficial part of that group too. Sometimes change is good, sometimes it's not. We'll see, it's on me if it's not. So it's the direction I thought we needed to move at this time. Okay, any questions or concerns on that? Okay, we'll go next to visitors, Mr. Kevin Stoller, is it Stoller? Wants to talk to us about the falconry in the park and the hunting. Sure, if you would come up to this microphone here. Is that mic on, Lori?
Yes, it is on.
Hello, Board, I'm Kevin Stoller, thanks for letting me speak. So I'm a local falconer and I'm coming to you guys, talk to you about trying to amend or against the banning of falconry on city property. Like, it takes a lot for us to get into the sport. Like, we have to take a federalized test. The game wardens come to our residence to do inspections periodically throughout our experience. We fly, these are wild birds and it takes a lot of time to train and get them to where they come back to us. We're not out there using weapons. I mean, the most that we carry is a walking stick or a cane.
Yeah.
I mean, and I'd like to show you my bird.
Sure.
So you guys understand that it's not some big, huge. I mean, we, this is a Harris Hawk. I have another bird at home, it's a redtail. And we just, we're just asking for you to not ban falconry on the city grounds. Like, we understand there's people thinking we're out there and like, these birds are a problem, but they're not. They're trained to, I mean, they just, we don't do anything that they don't naturally do in the wild. I mean, the bird, the other bird I have at home was caught just two, like a hundred yards down the road from the radio station. And then one of the other local falconers that I helped get into it, her bird was caught over here by Captain Dees. I mean, these are local, they're wild birds, so we're, I mean, we're just trying to get you guys to not ban falconry. Because I mean, it's six, 70 to 75 percent of these birds don't make it through their first winter. So I mean, becoming a falconry bird guarantees a better chance of that bird making it through winter. I mean, there's always accidents and stuff like that, but. And this is a Harris Hawk. I fly a redtail also.
One of, one of the concerns we had, we've, we'd had several requests back last year for people to hunt on city property, mainly deer hunting. I think that is one of the things we looked at when we were talking about banning hunting, any type of hunting on city property. And I realize that what you guys do is a lot different than deer hunting.
I mean, we don't, I mean, like I said, we, this is, we have them and a walking stick in a little bag. I mean, we don't, and I mean, they don't attack people, they don't, I mean, I have, I've had new, probably 50 encounters with people at the park that are just.
Jeez.
That's all right.
I've had 50 people or more come up to me at the park, want photos, have had nothing but amazing interactions with people. I've had, I got, I don't know how many videos and pictures with law enforcement wanting to know how I'm doing, how the bird's doing, if I've caught anything, or wishing me luck.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a handful of us around, I mean, we're not. If nothing else, if you can amend the thing, like, we understand the people's discretion in the park. If you guys can amend this order that we would be still authorized to fly our birds on other city-owned land, because there's big pieces of city-owned, lichfield city-owned property out past, down 259 by those factories and stuff. But I mean, that order is, it's a big broad spectrum and I mean, it's, I mean, we're not doing anything that a wild bird doesn't do. I mean, really. I mean, really, we're just bringing it to the woods and hopefully taking it home, because every time we let it go, you're not guaranteed that that bird's going to come back to you. And I mean, we put months and weeks into training and I mean, I personally have had, been able to help two people get into falconry, and it is because they've seen me at the park and got to like, come up and ask questions and didn't even know that that, this sport existed. And I mean, it's one of the oldest sports known.
Let me, let me ask you this, if, if, in my mind, in my mind, there's, there's a difference in actually hunting with the bird or flying the bird. I, I don't know if you can separate those or not. I know it's a wild animal and it's, it's bred to hunt, you know, to, to catch squirrels, my, whatever, you know. And is there any, anything about that that, that you could say, if you can separate the two, or every, every time you come out, will, will the bird be hunting?
The thing, the thing is like, when we go out, it's, it's not an every time guaranteed thing. You might, it might be two catches out of ten trips. I mean, it's not like we're going out there and slaughtering six or twelve of anything. It's one and done. And I mean, and from the experiences that I've had, I've never, I've never had anybody come up to me complain or even come up and cuss me out or badmouth me or anything and try, nobody's even, they just come up to see what you're doing, want photos. I mean, I've had my picture taken down here at the police department in front of the place with one of my birds. I mean, the only time I ever had an interaction with the cops that was kind of a iffy is when I first started and it was, I just needed to call dispatch because I didn't realize I was, I didn't realize it was a federal jail, so I had to call dispatch to be in that area to trap. Hey, and I mean, I, for the past three seasons, this will be the third season, I, many of the law enforcement, we don't fly normally unless it's thirty degrees or below. And that's always been the, under the agreement is, we won't be at the park unless it's thirty degrees or below. I mean, when it's freezing and frigid and nasty out and ninety percent of the people aren't out, it's just us.
Yeah.
With our birds, I mean, so if you can amend this order to at least still give us permission to hunt on, or fly on these other, and exercise our birds on these other properties, that's what we're wanting. I mean, we totally understand people's worry, people's concern at the park and people don't, can't handle what happens in nature and we just happen to be wandering around with the bird. I mean, where the birds ride. So if you guys can think about it to, or vote for or pass or whatever, to at least amend it to where we can still fly on all these other pieces of ground. I mean, we understand.
So you're, you're not flying the birds in the summertime?
No, it, the season starts the beginning of September and runs till the end of March. Ninety percent of the people don't start flying until the leaves come off the trees and usually the frost kills off all the bugs and everything and it gets cold out, because that's when, ninety percent of people that do fly birds, that's when we start flying, is in the wintertime. I mean, that's the majority of our season is when it's cold out. I mean, like, it's getting pretty warm now because I mean, redtails, they're starting to get into the migration and pairing up with another mate, so flying redtails, I mean, you throw your bird up and your bird may never come back.
Yeah.
I mean, same with this one, I mean, hopefully not, because he's more of a desert bird, but, I mean, so I don't, I mean.
Counsel, what do you guys think? We do have, we do have an item on the agenda tonight to do the first reading of the ban, hunting ban on all city property, so.
I mean, if you guys just can amend to where it's not like, hey, stay out of the park, we're okay with that. If you can just amend it to where we can still fly on those other ones, like the one out behind those factories, I don't remember that road down there by.
What size animals, excuse me, what size animals do they usually hunt?
The biggest would be a rabbit, that's the biggest, that my bird, I mean, there are, there's eagle, people use eagles out west and those hunt coyotes and deer and foxes, but those are big birds in big areas. Redtails are the same thing, the biggest thing would be a rabbit, all the way down to just a little mouse.
Take, take me through the steps from after the kill, after the kill, where you at? You stayed there and let, I mean, you go pick it up and go?
It's literally, as soon as the bird.
Throw it in the woods, do you?
No, the kill goes home with the bird, because that's the bird's food. But it's literally hands-on, whatever we have is a lure we have or whatever we're feeding the bird. You put a towel over it, pitch whatever meat or whatever I'm feeding the bird, bird goes to the, the quarry goes in a bag and, I mean, it's literally thirty seconds. As soon as the catch is caught, as soon as the catch is made, you're right there and it's a trade-off and it's put up.
So then do you continue hunting?
No, it's, I mean, depending on where you are, I mean, there are opportunities to do that, but usually when you trade off, what you've traded off is the full meal for the day for that bird. And so it's usually, it's ninety-five percent of the time, it's one and done.
And where are you asking, you said not, not the city park, but where about the factories?
Down by, on 259, you just go past the radio station down there, there's those factories. There's a road that goes down there and dead ends back by.
Nut Park.
Safe Light.
What we call the Nut Park.
Safe Light or something is down that road?
Yes.
But you guys have a big piece of city ground back there that we've flown on previously. And that's, I mean, that's way off the beaten trail, there's nobody back there.
Is, are you, are you wanting to say something, sir? Yeah, come on up.
Yeah, if you could come up to the mic, everybody can hear you, sorry.
Excuse me for interrupting, my name's David Nichols. Basically, the wording is always asking to be changed where it says all city properties to be worded differently, because there's so much property that the city owns that's not associated with the park, that's usable land. And basically, it's a catch and release for these birds, like you said, they've caught two here in town and they're going to be released and they're just trying to help the survival of these younger birds and it's a natural thing. But it's, it's just the wording, how, how the ordinance is worded is all it needs to be looked at, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And like, the redtail I have at home, at April first, that bird will be let go back into the wild. And a couple of other falconers that I know, they're releasing their birds this year. You can keep these birds until they grow old with you or the redtails. Any bird that you bring directly from the wild can be released at any given point back into the wild. And they revert very quickly back to the wild, I mean.
So is this something, go ahead.
The reason I ask, they, I, I live over on Hilltop and there are several hundred acres behind me back over there and there, there's one or two of these that fly around, they're, they're not vultures, but they fly around and have a, I've got an outside cat that's inside, outside, and it goes outside and they have attacked and tried to kill my cat. And that's why I was wondering if you have a stray cat, maybe got, got loose from the pound or something, would they attack and kill?
I personally have never had an issue with any of my birds and I have cats and I.
Okay.
I, when I'm not in city limits, I have, I hunt with dogs and, but they're literally nine-pound miniature wiener dogs. And those are my rabbit dogs and I don't have any problem with my birds getting them, I mean.
My cat, my cat's about eleven pounds and it attacked my cat and I just happened to be out there to take care of some business.
I, my bird, I've never had any of my birds attack any other animals.
Okay, that, 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 that's fine, it was just something.
Would y'all, would y'all want to table and let's discuss maybe a location for them versus the wording of the parks or not the parks or just the grounds that the city owns?
I think so.
I think, I think that's sensible and it's.
I'll make a motion to table it and just.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
What we'll do is we'll back up and reconsider, look at our wording and everything and.
We may find you a spot.
And, yeah, that's good. And if you, if you have, you know, if you want to discuss anything further, you're welcome to come down to City Hall any day and speak with me and we can, we can look at it together and see what your thoughts are versus what we're trying to accomplish and.
Well, that'll work, that, I'll come in to meet with you, sir.
Okay.
We, we appreciate.
And I'll take it, I mean, you guys didn't just shut me down, so, thank you.
Yeah, no, we, we want to be fair.
I had a lot of other things to say, but I.
Most of us here probably don't know a whole lot about.
And I mean, I, and I mean, from your guys' last meeting, there was a whole lot of comments that were just like, they were amazed that this is going on and it, like, just, they were just, it was so cool and then it kind of got darker, darker as it went.
Right.
More towards the city itself than in falconry. But I mean, there was a lot of good comments. I mean, like I said, I've never had anybody ever come up to me and yell at me, cuss at me, anything, I mean, so.
That's what, that's what we're here for. And we want, we want to be fair, we want to be fair and beneficial to everybody, you know, that's, that's our goal.
I appreciate it, sir, and yeah, I'll come up and meet with you.
Just tolerate me calling, I'm, I'm in and out here a lot, but I'm here every day for, you know, for some period of time, so.
Good information that you brought us and, and like I said, the rest of these guys may know a whole lot about this, but I didn't and that's why I was asking a question.
And I mean, I understand that there's people that out there that are afraid of their own shadow and they're out in public and it just, they want to be in everybody's business. I mean, we just kind of, we try to stay in the woods and stay out of everybody's eyesight anyway, so.
And that's, that was one of the considerations is, you know, that someone might see a kill or a catch or something, you know, you just, like I say, we try to, we try to be as beneficial as we can to everyone and consider everyone's, you know, possession, so. But if you, if you have time and want to, we can, you can come in, we'll discuss it and I can pass it along to the council what, what we talked about. So right now, we'll table it and, and, and we'll reconsider at later date.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate.
What's your bird's name?
Loki.
Loki?
Yeah, I haven't named the other one at the, at my house yet, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next on the agenda is a second and final reading on RZ-23-124, the rezoned property having a PVA number. Let Earlene read all those numbers.
Actually, I think Tyler was prepared to.
Tyler, okay. And Howard Avenue from agricultural, agricultural to R2.
An ordinance amending and adopting an amended zoning map entitled Zoning Map, Litchfield, Kentucky, by changing the district classification of the property located in Litchfield, Kentucky as herein after described from agricultural to R-2, single-family, medium-density. Whereas the Litchfield Planning Commission of Litchfield, Kentucky on January the eighth, two thousand twenty-four, held a public hearing on application number RZ-23-124. The property is currently owned by Rebecca Miller and Cheryl Cole and is designated as property having a PVA number zero eight three dash zero nine dash two eight dash zero six five, being more particularly described in deed book four six nine, page three three two, records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office and being located approximately eight hundred and twenty feet west of the intersection of Wallace Avenue and Howard Avenue, Litchfield, Kentucky. The request asks for a change from agricultural to R-2, single-family, medium-density. And whereas city council members conducted a review of the record and evidence presented before the Litchfield Planning Commission and its recommendation is that the zoning map amendment be approved as affects this property, its recommendation is attached and incorporated herein by reference and now therefore be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows, boundaries of the district as shown on district map entitled Zoning Map, Litchfield, Kentucky, being same as hereby amended for reasons adopted, all of which is made a part of here, made a part hereof as fully set out herein, including the rezoning request from the planning commission dated one nine, two thousand twenty-four, to the Litchfield City Council. So the property is described as follows. Property description, refer to property description, PVA number zero eight three dash zero nine dash two eight dash zero six five, deed book four six nine, page three three two, records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office and being located approximately eight hundred and twenty feet west of the intersection of Wallace Avenue and Howard Avenue, Litchfield, Kentucky, four two seven five four. Now zoned R-2, single-family, medium-density after the adoption of this ordinance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law. The ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict, given a second reading and duly enacted by the legislative body of the city of Litchfield, Kentucky on the fifth day of February, two thousand twenty-four, after first being read on the sixteenth day of January, two thousand twenty-four.
Does this need to be an individual?
It needs to be individual. First and second and then roll call.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept what she just read.
Second by Tootie, we'll do the roll call, Denny?
Aye.
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 Thank you, guys. Uh, second and final reading on RZ-23-125, to rezone property having a PVA number, being located at three oh six Marion Street from C1 to EX1.
An ordinance amending and adopting an amended zoning map entitled Zoning Map, Litchfield, Kentucky, by changing the district classification of the property located in Litchfield, Kentucky as herein after described from B-1 Neighborhood Business and C-1 Highway Commercial to EX-1 Exclusive Use. Whereas the Litchfield Planning Commission of Litchfield, Kentucky on January the eighth, two thousand twenty-four, held a public hearing on application number RZ-23-125. The property is currently owned by Clayton Watkins Construction Incorporated and is designated as a property having a PVA number zero eight three dash zero eight dash zero five dash zero zero three and zero eight three dash zero eight dash zero five dash zero zero four and zero eight three dash zero eight dash zero five dash zero four nine, being more particularly described in deed book five one seven, page one two zero, records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office and being located at three oh six Marion Street, Litchfield, Kentucky. The request asks for a change from C-1 Highway Commercial to EX-1 Exclusive Use and whereas city council members conducted a review of the record and evidence presented before the Litchfield Planning Commission and its recommendation is that the zoning map amendment be approved as affects this property, its recommendation is attached and incorporated herein by reference and now therefore be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows, boundaries of the district as shown on district map entitled Zoning Map, Litchfield, Kentucky, being same as hereby amended for reasons adopted, all of which is made a part hereof as fully set out herein, including the rezon request from the planning commission dated one nine, two thousand twenty-four, to the Litchfield City Council. So the property is described as follows. Property description, refer to property description, PVA number zero eight three dash zero eight dash zero five dash zero zero three and zero eight three dash zero eight dash zero five dash zero zero four and zero eight three dash zero eight zero five dash zero four nine, deed book five one seven, page one two zero, and being located at three oh six Marion Street, Litchfield, Kentucky, four two seven five four. Now zoned EX-1 Exclusive Use after the adoption of this ordinance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict, given a second reading and duly enacted by the legislative body of the city of Litchfield, Kentucky on the fifth day of February, two thousand twenty-four, after first being read on the sixteenth day of January, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
I'll second.
Second by Terry, Denny?
Aye.
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 Okay. Next on the agenda is second and final reading of an ordinance relating to probationary period for police officers.
We did, we did a first reading of this, we had voted to make the change at the last meeting. I had drafted this ordinance on my computer, I read it from my computer. There were a lot of changes and modifications, but we did get through a first reading. However, after all that work, it didn't save to my computer correctly. So I'm going to have to pull the minutes or watch the YouTube video and jot it down word for word of how I did the first reading. I'll present it at the next meeting for a second reading. If I, if there could, there could be a vote to table this to the next meeting, we'll do a second and final reading. I'm just going to have to pull it word for word of what we read at that first.
I'll make a motion to table relating to the probationary period for the police officers.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next on the agenda is authorize Mayor Miller to sign a two-year contract on the flock cameras. Chief Riley and Lori and I have been in contact with them quite a bit recently, haven't we, David? And they're, they're ready to, to move forward. Actually, got an email from Michelle today and they work on a two-year contract. So basically, we're, we're looking at, at the maintenance part of it, I guess, Lori, would that be the correct language? Unless we decide in, in this budget that we want to do more. Uh, unless we decide in, in this budget that we want to do more cameras, which may be a little premature, because we, we want, we're not gonna have a lot of time to judge whether they're,
Gotcha.
they're helping us or not. So we priced nine. Uh, that's what we'll start with. That was what was available from the money that was budgeted earlier, so.
Their contract actually calls it an annual reoccurring after one year, so. Uh, I know I missed the last meeting, so I'm not exactly sure what all that included. Do you know, David? The second year? That it just calls it an annual reoccurring?
That, that is maintenance.
Okay.
Maintenance, storage, things like that, that, that continually, that, that's a year, there's a yearly maintenance fee for each camera. The way they explained it to us is, uh, if there's a problem with one of them, they'll probably be here and have it fixed before we ever notice the problem, is basically what she said. They, so.
That's also the software, and it's all the maintenance and updates.
So at this price, we're good for two years?
Looks like we saved a little money if we did.
Mm-hmm. Yes, at that price, that co- contract total would be good for two years, yeah. So.
Is that right?
Any questions?
If you remember, this could run just a little, it could run quite a bit cheaper due to the installation of poles.
Right.
I think Wesley was just telling me that, uh, he's talked to several of the installation locations.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of them, we're not gonna have to have the, the actual flock poles installed.
Yeah.
So that's about a thousand dollar savings per pole, so there's about six poles that I think, uh, that we've already got that's just, you know, you just gonna have to talk to the owners of the poles and get that approved.
Yeah.
So, uh, it could be like six thousand dollars cheaper, maybe a little more.
Okay. That's good. Cheaper's always good. So, uh, if you guys have any, anybody have any questions, concerns regarding moving forward with this? Yes, I need a motion to authorize me to sign a two-year contract with, with the flock company.
I make a motion that we authorize Mayor Miller to sign the two-year contract on the flock campus.
Motion by Clayton, second.
I'll second.
Second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, next up is approval of the December twenty, twenty-three financial statement. We received that at the last meeting, and, uh, if there aren't any concerns or questions about that, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, to approve the December twenty, twenty-three financial statement.
I make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Tootie, second. Second by Gina. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Uh, next up is closure of Old Penner Drive right-of-way. Mr. Duval had come in here a couple of times and talked to us, and, uh, basically wanting to close the right-of-way in some parking areas that they have. I think that's their main concern. And they have started remodeling over there. The first building, when you're going in on the left, is, is empty, so. Looks like it's gonna be a good project for, for the people that live over there.
And it's my understanding the, these are easier to do if they're non-contested. So it's my understanding there's two property owners. Both are gonna sign a waiver. Once we have those waivers, we'll vote on it at that point, so. But we don't have the waivers returned. We should by the next meeting.
Okay, so we just, we just put this off till the next meeting, then?
Yes, no action tonight, just.
Any other new business, uh, Billy?
No.
Terry?
No.
Sheel?
No.
Gina?
Um, no good, no.
Okay. Denny?
I do. The, uh, Tourism Commission has agreed to donate twenty-five hundred dollars for a sign at Bevel Park. So we're gonna have a big sign. If you've seen the signs at, uh, cemeteries, it'll be similar to that, only a lot bigger. And hopefully it'll have the city emblems on the side. And thank Wes for, for doing it, and David, Mr., uh, metalworker, for, uh, doing it. So happy that they could do it, and happy that Wes is letting us do that, yeah.
David does a good job. Okay. Anything else, Denny?
That's it. Thanks.
Lori?
Uh, the only thing I have is, um, just to let you all know, we did get the letter from DLG, um, last week on the CPI, and it's three point four percent, so. We'll see that go into effect in July.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Erlene?
No.
Wes?
No.
David?
No, sir.
You been? It's Tyler?
No, sir.
Okay. Alright, we'll move on now to unfinished business. Uh, Community Alert app. We had the discussion with the Utilities Commission, I think, one month ago, Lori, or so, and they are not interested in, in participating with the app.
I did talk with Elsa this morning, Mayor, and she has sent, uh, the demonstrations out to all their commissioners to see if they would be interested. Uh, and I told her, once they watched it, just to let us know what they, if they were interested, what percentage that they thought they would be interested at. I know a lot of the council at the last meeting, when we told them Utilities wasn't, um, gonna partner with us at this time, um, they still wanted to move forward with it. So I guess my big question, reason I left it on there, is do we want to, do we want to amend the budget, um, for this fiscal year, or do we want to wait till July, July first and have it in that budget? And budget for it, you know, for our next fiscal year, so.
What are y'all's thoughts on that? It's something we want to move forward with. Uh, if tourism's interested, if, if they're not, it would be solely on us. I think once we get it and, and we get people enrolled in it and using it, I think Utilities may have, may see that there's some uses for it. Sometimes it just takes showing somebody something rather than, than talking about it, but.
And I think it's important that they realize that, that it would be used in place of and not in addition to things that they're already doing. Uh, that makes a big difference. Instead of doing double work, it's in place of, not in addition to. I'm in favor of moving forward, Mayor.
Okay. Any, anyone else, Clayton?
I'll second.
Okay. Terry, we got a motion on the table to move forward with, uh, with the, the app?
So that includes amending the budget for this year? I just want to be clear on what we need to put.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, we just done it one year?
Yes, it is a one, it's a one-year, uh, anytime we do it, it's just year by year, so.
Year by year, yeah.
We can see how it goes and.
That's right.
Yeah. I think we'll find it useful. The, the biggest, um, obstacle is going to be getting people to use it. But we can, you know, there's ways we can, we can do things. We, uh, did put some money in the budget to be on, uh, have somebody from the city on in the know a few times this year. So, you know, we can do things like that. We can put up flyers out here. We can have the girls mention it to people that come in, and I think once people, once people see what it, what they can do with it, I think it'll be popular for the community.
Well, it would have been really handy whenever the scales were down
Mm-hmm.
at the transfer station. It would have been handy whenever, uh, for our garbage pickup schedule that was so.
Erratic.
Yes, during the holidays.
Yeah.
I mean, that would have been a quick, we can't depend on free social media for everything.
Right. And like I say, there's some other benefits to it, uh, you know, tracking, work.
I'm sorry, I just noticed your mic's dead, so.
Okay.
The audience probably is not hearing you very well, so. I just give you a line to swap out. Sorry about that. I thought four, I thought four bars on it would last, since there's just five on it, but apparently not.
Um, so we've, we've got a motion on the table and a second to move forward, so I'll go with that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll, we'll move forward on that. Uh, Lori, can make contact with the gentleman that did the demonstration, and we'll get moving in that direction. Uh, next on unfinished business, code enforcement amended ordinance for condemned property.
We don't have anything to bring forward today. I did talk to Tyler last week, and Tyler does have an assistant now that I think we're gonna start including in, in those, in those works, so.
Okay. Okay. Uh, something we discussed, uh, earlier. David Langley has resigned from his position on the Board of Adjustments effective twelve, nineteen, twenty-three, and we have sixty days from his date of resignation to fill the position. So we, we have discussed that some. We've got some applicants that we're gonna talk to and try to make a decision on that in the next, next, in the short time, so. Right now, we're, we're, our task is to get in touch with the individuals that they want to interview and, and move forward from there. Any questions about that?
Are we okay with the time? Sixty days?
Um, I think we, we will be. Tyler's gonna have a discussion. You can explain that, Tyler?
Yeah, it says in the ordinance that the, the mayor and council has sixty days, and at that time, the planning commission, if they choose to, can make their own appointment, but it's not something that it's in the KRS that it has to be within that sixty days.
No, that's just our own ordinance?
Yeah.
So we'll try to move forward with that and, uh, and get that scheduled for their next meeting. Okay, ordinance three nine point zero one, revisit and possibly change from the wording, changed from the wording from shall to may consist of assistant police chief. Chief Riley has, has, uh, shown an interest in, uh, possibly promoting someone to lieutenant, captain. Which one, David? I can't remember.
It was, it was captain, and then possibility of two co-captains.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, I, I'm not saying do away with assistant chief, but
Just give you option.
have the option to have that or not have it.
Will you have an assistant chief?
Will I?
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm leaning more toward the co-captains.
What happens if you can come incapacitating? Who, who's, who's leading your group?
They could share the responsibility.
How would that work?
There with the men and the mayor and the?
You, you would have an admin captain, and you would have a patrol captain.
Didn't we have that at one point, David?
We did. We did. We did, and it, and it seemed to work fine. And it seemed to work fine. I understand your concern. I mean, I see what you're saying, but I think that, I think that we could work, work that out where there would be an understanding, you know what I'm saying, of, of who would be the contact if something did happen.
That, I think that's what, that's what we were talking about in the meeting before, and I think it's what Billy and I probably, or me anyway, who, if there was something came up, who is gonna be, take, take charge?
Other than the mayor.
Who's gonna take charge?
Okay. What, the way, the way that that worked before, whoever the admin captain was, would be your next in charge. Even though you work with a co-captain, there is co-captains. But the admin captain would be the one that would fall under next in command.
And you would designate that in their job duty, wouldn't?
Yes, yes, based on your all's approval.
Okay. Okay.
So do you have captains now?
I, I do not. I have sergeants right now.
So the only thing you have is sergeants?
I have sergeants right now, yes.
So, so you'll be, your budget will go up when you get two administrator places, right? Two captains, that'll raise your scale. Pay scale, correct? Lori, maybe?
That is.
We'll have to have job descriptions.
You'll have to have job description for them.
For the admin and for patrol.
And you're talking about filling that with existing employees, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it would be, it would be through promotion.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do we want to move forward with this for David?
I, I mean, I, like I say, I, I think it's just the wording there, and I mean, through discussion, uh, you know, whatever the mayor suggested, whatever the council suggested. You know, I think it would just leave an opening, and if, and if the council mayor felt that the chief of police would be the best way to go, to throw that in there, then that's the route we could take, you know?
Well, I think if we move in this direction, we still need to leave, leave the option on the table to have an assistant chief.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. I agree.
If you decide whenever, so.
I agree.
So just change it from shall to may, and then the new job descriptions, I mean, it will be outlined specifically in their job descriptions. If something happens to David, this position.
Have to be an ordinance, right?
The job descriptions are not part of the ordinance, no.
No, but you'll have to have who takes charge.
That would be in procedures and not ordinances, right? Yeah, that would just be procedures. You would add that in the ordinance below.
As a practical matter, I think we probably just, just saying shall, may, changing it, because we've got, that means you may have a chief of police. If you just do that, and chief of police is designated in all kinds of other ordinances. It seems simple, simplest to me just to eliminate assistant chief police from the ordinance and just say, as such, other members of the department may be provided. That would be assistant chief or whoever. But I don't think you want to put in there, may have a police chief when the ordinance requires it in every aspect of it. It's just simpler that way.
David says he might want us, an assistant police chief in the future.
Yeah, no problem, yeah.
No problem?
No.
We eliminate chief of, assistant chief of police, and we don't have a problem if he wants an assistant chief of police?
No. As long as it's other members of the department, you could say the assistant chief is another member of the department. The captain's another member, lieutenant, sergeant.
David, you want to think about it? Talk to Erlene and see what you all want to do? We could, we could do it, we could do a statement that said, um, other members of the department is so designated through the policy and procedures of the police department. And that would leave it to the. Do they have policies outlined that complete, that cover this? They do.
So where do we, where do we go from here?
We would just need to take, take a vote on whatever motion was made, and then I would just draft it and have a first reading next meeting.
Okay.
And it, it's up to you if you want a table. If you want to make a motion, it's your all's call, so I'm just taking notes to draft it. David, what do you want?
If you all would like to table it, and let's look at it more, I'm, I'm great with that. I'm fine with it.
I think we're making it harder than this needs to be.
I think we are, too, too.
All, all you gotta do is just eliminate assistant chief from the ordinance, and then if you have other members, then that designate anybody you want to be. You could have assistant chief or have anybody. But we can go ahead and vote.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion.
So I can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Will that work for you, Dave?
It will. It will, yeah. I mean, that's fine, because any, anything that I done like that, if I, if we did decide to go co-captain or assistant chief, like I say, I'm gonna bring it to you guys anyway, for approval or disapproval. You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, yeah, that'd be, I mean, that'd be fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
So Erlene, if we are striking assistant chief of police, are there other ordinances we're going to have to look at that specifically list assistant chief of police? I'll look and see if there are any other ordinances that address specifically a assistant chief. I'll do that as I draft this one. Because there may be, I don't know, but I'll, I'll look.
Okay. Alright, moving on to the next item, utility billing insert for updated account information. I think Terry had mentioned that maybe, uh, would be a good option for us to do, and Lori can maybe tell you a little more technically correct than I can, about, if you look on the back, there's a, a sheet there that they've come up with to send out. Instead of a card, so.
Yeah, I know Terry had asked for a card, but to do a postcard, we would have to manually stuff every one of those, because our stuffer won't do that, so. Alicia come up with this, and this is probably, I know she had sent something out before, uh, when we were in the old city hall right before we left. So this is probably something similar to what she sent out before. Hopefully, we'll get more, um, participation in it, I guess you could say, because she really didn't get hardly anything back before when she sent it out, but hopefully, um, and this, if we have that app, it would be a good time to say, hey, you're gonna get this.
That's what I was thinking. If we could, if we could put sending this out off until we get the app, we could tout the app on this, too.
We can do that.
That maybe would recruit a few people.
If they've not already stuffed some, I'll have to see. Utilities, they're, they're not interested in using the app, right?
As of right now, no.
Yeah. But it would be good to have that on here.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure the timeline, once we tell the guy that we're ready to go forward with the app, I'm not sure on the timeline of getting that set up, but. I don't think.
We just want to make sure we're ready.
Yeah.
And of course, we still have to amend the budget. And of course, we still have to amend the budget.
Yeah.